We need to remember Thomas Calderwood, who passed away November fifteenth at the age of seventy-six. He was nineteen sixty-six graduate of Newburyport High School. Tom was one of six brothers to join the Marine Corps. Simplify. He was selected as an admiral's orderly and bodyguard, which allowed him to travel the Mediterranean and the northern European countries. He worked in the planning office for fifteen years as a housing rehab specialist, where he used his strong knowledge of the building trades. Leaves one daughter, Leslie Boshin, and two grandchildren, Ansley Boshin and Kevin Boshin, behind. Let's keep the Calderwood family in our thoughts tonight. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm happy to present for the city council meeting beginning at seven P M. on November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Here.
Councilor Cameron.
Present.
Councilor Dunn.
Present.
Councilor Cohn.
Here.
Councilor McCauley.
Present.
Councilor Preston.
Here.
And Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Thank you. Councilor Wallace.
Here.
And Council President Chan.
Present.
All right. Late files.
Councilor Zee on your desk. It's an updated memo. It's also in the online packet already. It is from Newburyport regarding the superficial acceptance of one of Market Basket's extension projects.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files?
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call on that motion. Councilor Wright.
Mr. President.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Chan.
Yes. All right. Public comment.
I'm sorry. I know. And I'm happy about it.
All right. So we have one person for public comment, and it's Jean Coschella.
Hi, Jean Coschella, five twenty-two ninety-eight. And that's because I find myself thinking around rather than email with three different citizens, a few counselors, and the finance director about policies using free cash to offset faculty access. And so the counselor suggested, Rod, if you could tell us a little about that conversation to bring into the public square and help, you know, enlighten the debate tonight. And so the other bit was, you know, is it better to use free cash to offset taxes or is it better to move it to, you know, borrow less towards a level? And the way this came to me is earlier this weekend, somebody messaged me and said, hey, Jean, what happened at the gate activity? I knew about it. And I talked about the proposal to use free cash for five hundred twenty-five thousand. The person said, well, wouldn't it be better to spend it on streets and sidewalks? Like, I don't know. So I tossed it over to the finance director and a few of the counselors. He came back to me today. Lo and behold, I got a second question from somebody along the same line. And then as I was responding, and making some review, and people responded, a third person came in. So I want to share some of what we elevated as citizens. One is that we noticed in the finance director's presentation to the B N F, slide sixteen, he gave a wonderful ten-year history of how we use free cash. And we noticed in five years, we used free cash for this purpose, and five years, we didn't. And so we felt that might be good to explore. The second thing is that the third person sent in to me, what about the financial policies manual? And so the update was October twenty-twenty-three. It talks about using free cash to build reserves, farm non-referring costs, and cap on mortgages. And then the third one is just to say somebody advocated for using that money for the NHS wish to get.
Thank you, Coschella. And your address?
She said it.
Okay. All right. That is it, public comment. Mayor's comment. I believe the mayor is joining us from remotely. So Mayor Riordan, I've allowed you to speak.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Yes.
We can hear you.
I can hear you. Who's getting every day? What else can I hear?
We all hear you.
It's all that matters.
Okay. Sorry. Again, Lewis. Just having Thanksgiving, everyone. I hope everyone had a great holiday. It was great to be out in the office for a few days. See some pleasant families. I want to send special congratulations to the NHS senior class for winning Color Day, which is a very big deal. And then the NHS football team, who pulled off a really big upset against their arch rivals in eight straight, forty-four, twenty-six, finishing the year at nine and two. We had a wonderful Santa parade and tree lighting downtown yesterday. There was a really huge crowd. I want to thank everyone for coming out. I want to thank the Newburyport Rotary Club for organizing this event each and every year. A lot of the Newburyport chain of commerce that also provided the treat this year. It really looks amazing, as well as best ever, I think. I also want to thank the police, fire, and D P S for helping the parade go off without hits yesterday. And then the NHS High School, Dan, under the direction of Steve Cullen, that did a great job accompanying the cinema. It was really great there all around. Holidays are officially here, so I just want to give everyone a few dates to remember coming up. This weekend, on Saturday, from nine to three, the Newburyport Fire Department will hold its pillow truck event at Marshall's. And then the Newburyport Police Department will hold its pillow cruiser event at Market Basket in Shaw's. All two great events, done by police and fire each and every year, going to help those that need it the most during the holiday season. The Widdier Newburyport Chain of Commerce will hold their three invitation nights. This holiday is beginning starting this Friday, which is just crazy, by December first, December eighth, and December fifteenth. And I also want to just get people aware of the Newburyport Fire Department doing their Santa parade throughout the city. That's going to be on Friday, December twenty-second, starting at four P M. Reminder that tomorrow night, we have our annual joint meeting of the City Council of School Committee. It's going to be held tomorrow at six thirty at the Senior Community Center. So I look forward to seeing you all there. After listening to public comment, you will be voting on the tax rate proposal tonight. I did send back an adjusted tax proposal from what came out of Budget and Finance. The way I looked at it, and I saw that the council was looking to put five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of free cash towards it. The original recommendation was for two hundred eighty thousand dollars worth of free cash, so I kind of split the difference. And I put a proposal in for a tax rate of nine dollars and ninety-six cents per thousand. And the free cash we'd be using is four hundred and two thousand nine hundred eighty-nine. I thought this was a good compromise to kind of split the difference, if we can still help residents, and we can hopefully still have some of that flexibility, that free cash allow us throughout the year. In a year that we just don't quite have a lot, as we have in years past, particularly last year, we had the hardest amounts ever. So I look forward to that conversation later tonight. Whittier School Building Project, I really don't have much of an update. Hopefully, I can have an update as the week progresses. I'm still in contact with the other ten cities and towns that feed into the Whittier School District. I'm still talking to the state. I think for everyone out there that's interested, again, this is this project would benefit a lot of kids. And like I said, Whittier does a lot of great things at their school. But what they're asking for right now is just not be supported by the city. It would cost Newburyport thirty million dollars currently, with only twenty-nine students attending. They would build over sixty million dollars over the life of the loan. So again, it's still time to reach out to the Whittier School Committee. They're taking a vote on December thirteenth. And at that December thirteenth vote, they'll decide to move forward with a district-wide vote on January twenty-third. Any questions? We have a Whittier page on our website, goes to the mayor's office, that's called the Whittier School Project tab. You can get all the information, updated information to the project right there. And that's all I have for you.
Were there any questions? We can go through Council Vogel if there were. All right. Council Vogel, you can let the mayor know, there are no questions.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. With that, let's move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for November thirteenth. The next communication, five nineteen, has been removed and placed in the regular agenda by the council president. There are no transfers. There are two appointments. Appointment four forty-three is Jeanette Isabella, one hundred Water Street, to the Council on Aging until one-one, two thousand twenty-seven. Appointment four forty-four, Jennifer Bluestein, one ninety A High Street, to the CPC rep from the Planning Board, that's to be referred to Planning and Development. The items mentioned next are removed automatically with a motion to approve the consent agenda. Budget and Finance orders five oh-six, seven, eight, nine, transfer one seventy-five, one seventy-six. And we have one item coming out of Public Works and Services, Communication five sixteen, the snow and ice plan for two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-four. And that's the consent agenda this evening with that one change.
I'd like to suggest appointment four forty-three to Community Services.
Second. Can just make that change.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended and tag on receiving file the mayor's update.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call on receiving and filing mayor's update and approving the consent agenda as amended. Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Here.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Chan.
Yes.
Thank you.
And point of order, just want to say, there's a typo just there. The appointment for the CPC rep for the Planning Board is December tenth, two thousand twenty-six. It says two thousand twenty-three, which confused me, but it's the right thing on the appointment paper, which is why I did.
Okay. So with that in mind, the vote stands. I think we'll call that.
Scripter's error.
My favorite words.
All right. Moving right along, since we already took care of the mayor's update.
Yeah. There's no first reading of appointments that leads us to Communication five nineteen.
So this is the William Lloyd Garrison proclamation that was in our packet. Probably should have been read by the mayor tonight instead of being put in our packet. But if y'all will give me some leeway, I'd like to read it out loud, and we'll go from there. So, whereas Newburyport is the birthplace of William Lloyd Garrison, a nineteenth-century abolitionist journalist and suffragist, and whereas Black abolitionist influence Garrison were critical to the success of the abolition movement and should also be publicly celebrated, including Newburyport's Caesar Sotcher, Nancy Prince, Andrew Raymond, and others, and whereas today, the city of Newburyport acknowledges the many eighteenth and nineteenth-century Newburyporters hindered abolitionists and also hindered human rights and social justice, and whereas December tenth, two thousand twenty-three marks the two-hundred-eighteenth anniversary of Garrison's birthday and his International Human Rights Day, and whereas the annual William Lloyd Garrison lecture raises awareness about the goals of abolitionists and the relation to today's contentious issues, especially concerning race, gender, class, and inclusion. Now, therefore, do I, Sean R. Riordan, mayor of the city of Newburyport, Massachusetts, hereby proclaim the week of December fourth to the tenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Human Rights and Anti-Oppression Education Week. With that being said, I would remind folks that next Saturday night is the William Lloyd Garrison Lecture at the Old South Church at seven o'clock. I would also say that we should probably vote on this proclamation as an emergency, with an emergency preamble tonight, so if someone would like to make a motion.
Motion to waive the rules for an emergency preamble to accept the proclamation.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
On approving proclamation with an emergency preamble, Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Here.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council President Chan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second reading of appointment? Yes.
Appointment four forty-two, Laura Kibalt. Eight Ten Street to the Cultural Council into twelve fifteen, two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call on Appointment four forty-two. Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Chan.
Yes.
Next, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven gift acceptance orders.
Motion to refer, actually, all of them, five twelve through five nineteen, including the holiday parking to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Second.
Council McCauley, and then Council Lane.
Yeah. I'd like to separate our orders for fourteen, five fourteen and five fifteen, and send those to Community Services.
Okay. It's finally.
So I have all the other orders going to B N F.
Council Lane, you also had a comment?
I just wanted to separate out five fifteen.
Okay.
To go someplace other than, or just to speak on it?
Just to separate.
Separate. Okay. So now the motion covers five fourteen, go to C and C S. Everything else go into Budget and Finance. Five fifteen is not part of the motion.
Wait, no, no, no.
It was going to C S at the same time.
Speak on it.
Separate.
Okay. I withdraw.
So again, everything but five fifteen. Five fourteen is going to C S. Everything else is going to B N F.
Correct. So moved.
Second.
Will call.
On that motion, Council Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Here.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Chan.
Yes.
Thank you.
And point of order, just want to say, there's a typo just there. The appointment for the CPC rep for the Planning Board is December tenth, two thousand twenty-six. It says two thousand twenty-three, which confused me, but it's the right thing on the appointment paper, which is why I did.
Okay. So with that in mind, the vote stands. I think we'll call that.
Scripter's error.
My favorite words.
All right. Moving right along, since we already took care of the mayor's update.
Yeah. There's no first reading of appointments that leads us to Communication five nineteen.
So this is the William Lloyd Garrison proclamation that was in our packet. Probably should have been read by the mayor tonight instead of being put in our packet. But if y'all will give me some leeway, I'd like to read it out loud, and we'll go from there. So, whereas Newburyport is the birthplace of William Lloyd Garrison, a nineteenth-century abolitionist journalist and suffragist, and whereas Black abolitionist influence Garrison were critical to the success of the abolition movement and should also be publicly celebrated, including Newburyport's Caesar Sotcher, Nancy Prince, Andrew Raymond, and others, and whereas today, the city of Newburyport acknowledges the many eighteenth and nineteenth-century Newburyporters hindered abolitionists and also hindered human rights and social justice, and whereas December tenth, two thousand twenty-three marks the two-hundred-eighteenth anniversary of Garrison's birthday and his International Human Rights Day, and whereas the annual William Lloyd Garrison lecture raises awareness about the goals of abolitionists and the relation to today's contentious issues, especially concerning race, gender, class, and inclusion. Now, therefore, do I, Sean R. Riordan, mayor of the city of Newburyport, Massachusetts, hereby proclaim the week of December fourth to the tenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Human Rights and Anti-Oppression Education Week. With that being said, I would remind folks that next Saturday night is the William Lloyd Garrison Lecture at the Old South Church at seven o'clock. I would also say that we should probably vote on this proclamation as an emergency, with an emergency preamble tonight, so if someone would like to make a motion.
Motion to waive the rules for an emergency preamble to accept the proclamation.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
On approving proclamation with an emergency preamble, Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Here.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Chan.
Yes.
Thank you.
And point of order, just want to say, there's a typo just there. The appointment for the CPC rep for the Planning Board is December tenth, two thousand twenty-six. It says two thousand twenty-three, which confused me, but it's the right thing on the appointment paper, which is why I did.
Okay. So with that in mind, the vote stands. I think we'll call that.
Scripter's error.
My favorite words.
All right. Moving right along, since we already took care of the mayor's update.
Yeah. There's no first reading of appointments that leads us to Communication five nineteen.
So this is the William Lloyd Garrison proclamation that was in our packet. Probably should have been read by the mayor tonight instead of being put in our packet. But if y'all will give me some leeway, I'd like to read it out loud, and we'll go from there. So, whereas Newburyport is the birthplace of William Lloyd Garrison, a nineteenth-century abolitionist journalist and suffragist, and whereas Black abolitionist influence Garrison were critical to the success of the abolition movement and should also be publicly celebrated, including Newburyport's Caesar Sotcher, Nancy Prince, Andrew Raymond, and others, and whereas today, the city of Newburyport acknowledges the many eighteenth and nineteenth-century Newburyporters hindered abolitionists and also hindered human rights and social justice, and whereas December tenth, two thousand twenty-three marks the two-hundred-eighteenth anniversary of Garrison's birthday and his International Human Rights Day, and whereas the annual William Lloyd Garrison lecture raises awareness about the goals of abolitionists and the relation to today's contentious issues, especially concerning race, gender, class, and inclusion. Now, therefore, do I, Sean R. Riordan, mayor of the city of Newburyport, Massachusetts, hereby proclaim the week of December fourth to the tenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Human Rights and Anti-Oppression Education Week. With that being said, I would remind folks that next Saturday night is the William Lloyd Garrison Lecture at the Old South Church at seven o'clock. I would also say that we should probably vote on this proclamation as an emergency, with an emergency preamble tonight, so if someone would like to make a motion.
Motion to waive the rules for an emergency preamble to accept the proclamation.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
On approving proclamation with an emergency preamble, Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Here.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council President Chan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second reading of appointment? Yes.
Appointment four forty-two, Laura Kibalt. Eight Ten Street to the Cultural Council into twelve fifteen, two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call on Appointment four forty-two. Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Chan.
Yes.
Next, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven gift acceptance orders.
Motion to refer, actually, all of them, five twelve through five nineteen, including the holiday parking to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Second.
Council McCauley, and then Council Lane.
Yeah. I'd like to separate our orders for fourteen, five fourteen and five fifteen, and send those to Community Services.
Okay. It's finally.
So I have all the other orders going to B N F.
Council Lane, you also had a comment?
I just wanted to separate out five fifteen.
Okay.
To go someplace other than, or just to speak on it?
Just to separate.
Separate. Okay. So now the motion covers five fourteen, go to C and C S. Everything else go into Budget and Finance. Five fifteen is not part of the motion.
Wait, no, no, no.
It was going to C S at the same time.
Speak on it.
Separate. Okay. I withdraw. So again, everything but five fifteen. Five fourteen is going to C S. Everything else is going to B N F.
Correct. So moved.
Second.
Second. Will call.
On that motion, Council Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Dunn.
Yes.
Councilor Cohn.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
We're collectively voting on these to go to?
But not five fifteen.
Okay. Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Here.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
And Council Chan.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right? Matter still passes.
Once in awhile.
Alright.
I have to be wrong for you to be right, so this is... So... Ordinance 157, which is the second reading of the public art policy.
Motion approved on second reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston. Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Eleven to zero, thank you. Last second reading of ordinances, ordinance 146, which is amending Chapter 2-34 responsibilities of the Committee on Community Services.
Motion approved on second reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Second reading, ordinance 146, Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston. Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Eleven to zero, thank you.
Alright, committee aions, Counselor Z.
So, motion, we'll start off with motion to approve Order 507, with a residential factor put into the blank space of one.
Second.
So, I thought we would adjudicate this one first, because getting the, if there's going to be a CIP shift debate, it's best to have it before we start arguing about free cash, if we choose to. This year, the mayor did recommend no CIP shift, or that's why the factor is one. And there was a memo included as to why, but the sort of Cliff's Notes version is that we're not seeing the same major divergence in the value change from year over year for CIP, in this case standing for commercial industrial properties, not capital improvement plan versus residential. So, the recommendation was for one. In committee, we did talk about this in context with the tax rate. I've tried to make available time if there was a desire by any counselor to have a debate about a shift other, to have any shift at all in any direction. Didn't seem there were any takers at that time, so there were not any amendments really to this, other than to fill in the slot with a residential factor of one. I know there's be some debate on 506, which is where the free cash discussion will come in, but, so, that is the motion. We did, you know, the committee report, just in the same will be true, it's hard for me to say we voted three zero on this, because we voted on them together, but we did come up with that recommendation to use 525K and a factor of one. That was what we ultimately took the vote on, so just to clear on what the committee came up with, but for this purpose, we're talking about no shift.
Thank you, Counselor Z, discussion. Alright, we're going to do the roll call on 507.
So, if I understand it correctly, it will be that the City of Newbury Report adopts a residential factor of one fiscal year 2024. Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve Order 996, which is the, 996, that's the tax rate, 506, Order 506. There are two blank spaces in there, and they are proposed to be filled in with $9.96 for each, for the same, for both fields, that's the result of no CIP shift. So, let me try and give you a little bit more detail on this. The mayor actually kind of started off, I think, in a good way, the committee report, so there was an initial recommendation to use about $280,000 of free cash, and that would actually result in a tax rate of $9.97. And the committee, which was committee of the whole, deliberated on this, and came to the recommendation or the idea that we should use $525,000. We didn't formally calculate exactly what that rate would have been, but you can kind of triangulate what it would be, and I'll get into that in a moment, using some of the charts, the heat maps, as Finance Director called them. So, I'm going to give you some of the detail and some of the debate, and then we have the benefit of the Finance Director virtually, and you have the assessor here as well in person, if you have questions that you wish to ask. So, as most years go, we started off the conversation with the discussion about assessing. There's always a lot of questions about how assessments are done. First thing is, there is a lot of publicly available information. The 2024 evaluations are out, there's a map of single-family homes, where you can kind of see by color-coded dot the change, and you're welcome to study that for your own property, or for any neighborhood or properties that you may be interested in. We did talk a little bit about methodology, and there's an acronym here, CAMA, that's being used quite a bit, but essentially, it's a combination of different sort of ideas, if you will, some market data that's being fed in, and then there's also the cost to build, and there are some other factors that can, and sometimes are used, depending on the property, and so there's the couple of approaches that the assessor was kind enough to explain to us. We did talk about where the sources, source of data was for sales, and Marshall and Swift was mentioned, which is a company that aggregates data. There's also, every time a home is sold, a new report, the deeds get reviewed by the assessor's office, and that's part of the inputs that they take in. I just, the two things I think are worth mentioning is, number one is, there's always a timing consideration with this, because the assessor isn't assessing to today, or in the last hour. They're going by the January 1 of the year, so you've always got a little bit of lag you have to contend with, and so what you might be seeing in the market in the last month may not have been true, say, a year ago, when a different property is sold, so you just have to keep that in mind. And number two is, the assessor really isn't motivated in either direction to assess higher or lower, because at the end of the day, we're going to derive a tax rate simply by dividing what we need to run the City of Newbury Report, which we decide through the budget process, by the total assessments in the city. And so, if the assessments are higher, the tax rate can be lower, if the assessments are lower, the tax rate can be higher, but in the end, we're going to take the $100 bill. People seem to like my restaurant bill analogy, so if it's a $100 bill, we're going to split it, and so we have to get to $100, though, otherwise, we're not paying for our meal. So, we have got to get to there, one way or the other. So, we talked about, you know, also some things about how evaluations are done on commercial industrial, and there's income approach, and all sorts of different things, and then we also dove into a conversation of the divide between land and structure value, so that the total assessment of a property would be the combination of the value of the structure or structures, and the land, and the importance of that, particularly for Plum Island, where structure valuations have an impact on regulation that may be triggered when somebody wants to do a renovation or repair, that sort of thing. So, we did keep on for assessments for a little bit. There are, again, just for the benefit of residents, bottom line is that there is an abatement process, as always, if you don't feel that your assessment was accurate, and to, again, simplify, January, that's when you should be thinking about filing your abatement, if you are interested in doing so, and the assessor's office would be the place to probably start and finish with that. Go and see them, they'll help you understand what you need to fill in, and basically how to, you know, what you need to be trying to do to make your case, to indicate that your assessment was wrong. And then also comes up a lot, there are statutory exemptions that are available to those who qualify. Senior ones are ones that we talk about often, so if you are interested, or you think you know somebody who could be helped by one of these, again, you should visit the assessor's office, there's a nice table of the available ones, you can see what their requirements are, to see if you or somebody you know might fall for them. Alright, so, we did have some public comments, and then, you know, there's a lot of interesting conversations, again, around assessments, I think, quite a bit, in terms of, you know, the variations even between properties that are sort of next to each other, or close to each other. It's hard to get into individual examples with that. Then we debated the shift for a little while, again, there wasn't, based on that conversation, seemingly impetus to have that conversation, but we did center around the discussion about that 20% rule of thumb, we need to have 20% of commercial industrial to justify, considering a split rate. A new report is definitely less to that, less than that for now. Okay, then we get into the free cash debate, as you heard during public comment, public, it certainly is a policy question. You know, this isn't a financial or numerical question, free cash is derived from our primary two sources, which is better-than-expected revenue, which could be state aid, it could be building permits, it could be anything, just better-than-expected, and drives itself into an excess, and then it becomes free cash, and then the state certifies it, and then we do ultimately have the opportunity to use it for any legal expenditure, and this certainly would be one. So, we have free cash as an opportunity, pardon me, we have better-than-expected revenues, and then we also have better-than-expected expenses. So, in other words, if expenses come in lower, we budget align for $100,000, only 97 is spent, we end up with $3,000. So, those are our two sources. As I mentioned, we've already had the debate about what we're going to spend in this fiscal year to run the City of Newbury Report, now we are going to try and raise those funds, and free cash is a way to soften, if you will, the proposed tax increase. The original recommendation was to, was again, to use that $280,000, which results in about a $490 per year increase in the average single-family tax bill. If you look at page 65 of the PDF, or basically the heat map for this, you'll see that, you know, the revised at about 400 and so on, is going to take you right in between two lines, so, and Ethan's here, and he's probably crunched the numbers exactly, but I would imagine that it'd be somewhere on the order of 475 to 478 per year increase, instead of the 490. So, 480,000 is a lot of money, but obviously, split over every household in the City of Newbury Port, it doesn't drive, it doesn't cut the increase down by half or anything like that. So, that just gives you a kind of a scale of some of the numbers that we are talking about. We did have a little bit of a debate about, you know, again, should you use free cash for this purpose, what's the long-term effect on it, and a lot of it comes down to opportunity cost, you know, we have money here in the form of free cash. If we spend it on this, we can't spend it on something else, that's certainly true. The Finance Director also points out that utilizing free cash can catch you a little bit down the road, because if you don't have that free cash, or choose not to use it in subsequent years, you have to make up that gap, and then we get into the whole conversation about the levy limit, and how that goes up every time. So, the revised presented by the mayor's office is what we have before us, that's why I recommended that amendment at the beginning, because while the committee's recommendation was 525, there's an accompanying transfer that impacts this, and the council does not have the authority under the charter to increase an expenditure, so essentially, your options are, be unhappy with this transfer, and we can try and sort of have an open debate here, and negotiate it, accept it as it is, or you can certainly use, we can cut a transfer, so we do have that option, if there's a feeling that we should retain more of the free cash for whatever other purposes we have. But I thought by using the mayor's recommendation, it at least puts us at square zero.
Thank you, Counselor Z, discussion, and I will make, promote Director Manning to a panelist if I possibly can. Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. So, we did have a fantastic, I think, committee of the whole conversation on this, and, you know, one of the things I kind of was trying to tease out, and it absolutely is a policy decision, and I think that's what we're trying to come around, what's best practice, what makes sense, and then how can we best kind of anticipate, you know, the certified free cash amount, and what does that mean, and how could it be best applied? And one of the things that I thought was interesting during the conversation was, and I think this was on another graphic, I don't see it here, but we actually started using free cash, I believe, last year, to try to help relieve some of the property tax burden, in trying to supplement, to kind of make up the difference for what we used in our budgeting numbers, to get to prop two-and-a-half limit. Previous years, we didn't use free cash, and it was, it was one of those things I had to go look back on. That was the first budget, since I came on in 2018, we never used free cash, the first time was last year, in my time on the council. So, it made me probe a little bit more into what would be the best position, where would it make sense, and what are we actually trying to accomplish? And so, for me, it was helpful to take a look at previous types of documents we had, and one of which is the CIP, and I did bring my whole budget binder, didn't need it, I just needed a couple of pages, but it made me try to think a little bit about what we've seen with capital projects, and the use of free cash for capital expenditures, and where it makes sense, you know, instead of borrowing. And that conversation is actually a really good conversation, because as we have seen, costs go up, and project costs are going up just every day, on a daily basis. Next year, whatever we're going to be paying for construction, or any project, is going to be more than the year later, and we saw that with the fire station, there's no, that, we can't deny that. So, I think one of the things I want to make sure we're prudent about, is if we have free cash available, and we know we have projects, and if you look at the use of free cash, it is for one-time capital expenditures. So, I just caution us, if we are going in this direction, and this is maybe the amount of a compromise, on how we're kind of relieving the burden, one of the things that really is helpful, and I point to the slide deck, that is part, is kind of accompanying this, and that shows where the shift is. If we actually use no free cash, we're talking about $10.06 per thousand of the assessed amount, as opposed to where we are right now, which is the $9.96 per thousand. So, we're talking about $10.06, and dropping to $9.96, and using $402,000 of free cash. So, I think some of that context needs to be really understood, and from where I'm sitting right now, can that $402,000 be used in a way that would still provide a benefit to the residents? As opposed to kind of spreading it out to make something more palatable, but we know that that kind of varies across the board for every resident. The last thing I do want to speak to a little bit, which I, is more about process, so if you look in our packet, Transfer 176 Revised, that memo is really buried in here, and I don't know if everyone got a chance to read the memo, but it's dated November 20th. So, that memo was put together after the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. It was really hard for me to find that, because I feel like that should have been introduced as a new communication, and I've been pointing many residents to take a look at that memo. But one of the things that's kind of confusing me on the memo, is if you look at the footnotes. So, part of this revised amount of 402, we're talking about footnote one, and let me see if anyone could follow me, so I just want to just pause here, and get us to think a little bit about what's being said. The projected expenses for fiscal year 2024, capital projects to be funded from free cash, which includes both planned and newly emerged needs. So, in looking at planned, which is CIP, to me, newly emerged needs is not clearly specified in this memo. So, I'd like to understand that a little bit more, because what we're saying is, the administration's showing, here's what we're, what we're, our compromise, here's what we think would make sense to go ahead, if you want to kind of relieve the tax burden for residents and use free cash, here's how much we want left over for capital projects. So, if I'm looking at 1.4 million, I'm trying to think, where is that? The second thing is, then, we're talking about what's remaining, if we take out what we're already spending on free cash, we have tonight, the, we're taking in some of the money from the insurance that was given, the 550, so the total amount is really anticipated, that 1.4 million of free cash will be available for capital projects. The remaining cash, free cash balance will be between 300,000 and 400,000. And I'm trying to understand some of these new numbers in this memo, and I would like to hear Ethan's kind of commentary on a couple of things. In looking at this memo, I think administration can answer maybe, what is that list of, you know, that some of the needs that are newly emerged? And the second one is, if Ethan can answer the 300 to 400,000 being left in free cash, how does that meet the AAA bond rating we have, where I've always seen that we had to have something around, I believe it was 500 or 700, there was some amount, and it says here, this amount is significantly below our standard reserve minimum of $700,000. So, this memo is very new to me, and I would like to have, if Ethan can comment mainly on that part, on the AAA bond rating impact, and then I would love to hear from Chief of Staff on the newly emerged ideas for capital needs. Thank you.
Director Manning?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So, I actually can tackle the $1.4 billion dollar bill for a while, Matt. So, basically, what happened was, after the committee convened, started to reset down for the final scheme, the committee chaired office, if I look at what I can really lose really would be for cash, going into, you know, the January 4, 2024, is, yeah, surprisingly enough, it came up to about $1.8 million, which I should say, includes some placeholders, $100,000 for highway vehicles replacements, another $250,000 potentially for security cameras and access control, that's one of the newly emerged needs that we're potentially looking at. And then we backed all our remaining capital, which is $428,000, which leaves around 1.37 million that would potentially need to be spent on capital, that gets everything, you know, one ahead, kind of based on those list that we put together. So, right, as the councilors stated, if we did all of that, if we also allocated $402,000 to the tax rate, it would leave us potentially with a balance in the $300,000 to $400,000 range, kind of just based on those dependencies that will be incurred, including $300,000 for snowmice and overtime, which could go up or down in any given year. So, right, is that the ideal ending spot for the city in terms of our financial policy? I would say not. I mean, in my view, it would be best if we did try to get closer to that $700,000 mark, which is 1% of our tax levy. So, right, would it be kind of balancing some of the capital needs that we're talking about, trying to use other available funds to supplement down, or possibly, you know, just maybe to live a lot less, to do a pen, to really not bring that free tax balance down to a level that really would not be adequate if it just was the city.
Chief of Staff Levine, did you want to speak?
Now, I think Ethan addressed most of the emerging needs, but I would just say that when we put this year's capital budget together, we were going through a transition in the Department of Public Services, which brings up some of those highway vehicle spending pieces that Ethan identified. I think those were newly emerged, because we had new leadership that looked at some of our equipment, and identifies the needs that we need to be addressing. And the other part was the access controls and security cameras that Ethan mentioned as well. This is a more newly emerged need, because we identified some pieces of that, but hadn't really put it together into a comprehensive plan. I think once we realized that there was a need across the city, it became a more expensive project, but one that makes a lot of sense to take on much sooner, because of the security concerns across the different buildings, and I think some recent events have shown that it is a good idea to have that kind of coverage. So, those were the newly emerged.
Thank you. Counselor Z.
Just wanted to see if anybody else has spoken.
Alright.
Oh, yes, yes, it's okay.
Counsel Vogel has to stand up.
Counsel Vogel.
I'll jump in, in the cycle, wherever.
I'm happy you yielded, Counsel Z, you call on it, that's fine.
He's had, Counsel Vogel's had to stand up, that's...
Which, which do you want?
Counsel Vogel, please speak.
Thank you. So, I'm always in opposition to using really any big cash at all for lowering the tax rate. It makes no sense to me. I don't see, in particular, it doesn't make any sense to me that we're doing $1.4 million sort of in expectation. I mean, all of those items really should be considered by City Council at the time that they want it to be spent, so it seems odd that we would make this preemptive strike by, you know, doing it through the tax rate, that doesn't make any sense at all. To the Director of Finance, you know, he's an expert, and he's, you know, certainly one expert in our community that needs to be respected, though I understand that for some of the people in council, it's hard to respect experts, but he himself is standing here saying that we need to stay in that $700,000 range, why would we go below that, for his reasons? I have serious questions about. So, the thing about free cash is, it is not, which we may hit the City Council, it is not over taxation. We have free cash because we conservatively, thanks to the Finance Director, conservatively overestimate our revenue, and at the same time, we conservatively estimate, or overestimate our costs. So, we have a nice balance of where we certainly are going to need our costs, and we underestimate our, what our revenues are going to be, so we end up with free cash. And that free cash is what we depend on through the year, for a lot of these projects that come forward to us. Every time we turn around, free cash, free cash, and that's what it's there for. And to some of these projects that the administration has anticipated, you know, so be it, and they come forward, and they need to be debated. But this, what is essentially a minor cut in taxes, nobody likes taxes, but on the other hand, there's a tremendous number of people in this community that do not like taxes, and if you talk with them, they go, hey, this is a beautiful place to live, we have great services, and those are being paid, and this, I pay taxes. Now, to the people that live in the lower-valued homes, and notoriously are burdened by fixed incomes, we need to do something about that, certainly, to do a cross-the-board tax cut, which is essentially what we're doing, with spending free cash that can be used by everyone across the city, or benefit the entire city, that's not the proper way to do it. As the public comment individually indicated, this is not the policy of free cash, we should not be using free cash in this way. I'll owe you.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Counselor McCauley, then Counsel Donahue.
Yeah, thank you, I'm just catching my breath. You know, I want to thank the administration for coming back with an enhanced proposal. I do agree that at the Budget and Finance Committee, we had a good, robust conversation, mostly around policy, around where it is, and I want to commend the assessor for being able to clearly articulate that she doesn't have anything in it for anyone against her. The assessments went up, yes, they did, why? Because we live in a community that's of value, but that process, we follow, we really have very limited control as to what the assessments will be, the market will determine that going forward. What we can control is spending, and over the last three years, spending has increased by $14 million. From '21 to '22, it went up 5.1%. From '22 to '23, it went up 6.4%. From '23 to '24, which is the budget we passed in June, it went up 4.4%, that's $4 million. And so, part of that, what we see here from the memo, is $3.1 million minus the boat, is like $2.6 million of free cash. That's money that is overtaxed, and yes, I said it, because it is. It's not our money, it's the people's money, it's our taxpayers' money, they are our customers. And you know what? Every good business takes some of their excess, and they invested in their plant and equipment, which is what the administration has proposed, a million, a million four, great, but those companies also give back to those who need it. We burden, we don't burden our high-end taxpayers, why? Because they pay it, and they're very open about paying it, and they make great gifts to the city as well. The low-end taxpayer, we have multiple projects and programs through the state that actually reimburse them, and we should reach out to them and pull them in even more. It's the middle-class seniors that get hosed, year after year after year. What we're asking people right now is to come up with an extra $480,000. That's just to pay for what we already agreed to, that we already agreed to a 4.8% increase in schools, we already, and they deserve it, I'm not saying they don't, but we already agreed to those things. We haven't even gotten yet to the campaign goodies of everybody who wants new projects and to spend, and so we've raised taxes over $1,000 over the last three years on our taxpayers. And for us, as a city council, I think, as fiduciaries, it is helpful for us. Maybe it's not giving them back $1,000, but if we gave them back $100 a year, it's something. It's something that we, as councilors, I feel, should be able to vote on and give back to them. And I thank the administration for listening to us, and upping their original proposal, not as high as the proposals were the other night, but coming back with a number that I think strikes the fair balance. So, I for one, am going to vote for this, and again, I thank the administration, and I thank my fellow councilors for the lively debate on this. Thank you.
Counsel Donahue, then Counsel Preston McCauley, I mean, Cameron.
Thank you, Counsel President. I am going to stand in opposition to this, but with... I am going to stand in opposition to this, but with pretty good reasoning, I feel, which I'd like to explain. You know, I do fall in that lower-middle sort of nonexistent realm of income. And I got to tell you, $50, $75 saved on my tax bill, I'd rather have sidewalks. I'd rather have schools. I'd rather have streets that aren't going to put my car in the shop. I'd rather be able to say, okay, we pay a lot in taxes in our community, which, as was stated, a lot of folks don't mind, because at the end of the day, it's what you have to show for it. If we need to reprioritize what we're spending our tax money on, that's a bigger conversation. But to just blanket, give everybody this little tiny discount for a year when we have things like the Market Square culvert that's going to continue to flood and the sidewalks that need continuing repairs or implementation where there are none, we need the free cash for our capital improvement projects. That's it. It's not an over taxation when we have projects that we can't pay for. And for it to compromise our triple bond rating and be below that basic minimum is also something I am not willing to compromise whatsoever. So, we've said no to much milder conversations that would compromise that bond rating. I feel this is absolutely in the same realm. So, with that, I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Counsel Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So, first, let me commend our resident Ms. Costello, who we heard in public comment for, you know, her really thoughtful analysis on this. So, my question would be to the Finance Director in particular. So, we have a financial policy, which was last updated in October '22, I think it was. But in that particular policy specifically states that we should avoid using free cash in this exact way to try to reduce the tax rate. So, I would love to hear the rationale from the Finance Director about why we should not be utilizing free cash in this instance.
Director Manning?
Yes. Okay, great. So, right, our financial policies talk about maintaining that minimum threshold, you know, not regularly rely on free cash just at the tax rate. I think that's kind of a standard principle when it comes to the municipal finance. But I think the one kind of record here, which is kind of why, when we got together to kind of look at the recommended tax rate, we did recommend spending $280,000. The reason for that, if you look at what was used last year, over $760,000 of free cash was used last year. So, really, to go from using all that free cash to using no free cash, it would be a pretty substantial hit on residential homeowners in particular. So, I think, while I would recommend using free cash every year to set the tax rate, I think using a moderate amount to help kind of bring down that gap from where we taxed last year versus where we should have been in the funds are expended, I think using, reduce the amount of free cash, kind of does make sense to kind of stabilize the rate for residents. Hopefully, as we go into next year, looking for, you know, our residents will expect it even a little bit more. Hopefully, we won't see the, you know, the trim of this year over here. So, we see this year and last year that kind of, you know, pushed everything into a different realm. So, right, I think, you know, I think the mayor's compromise, you know, is trying to keep that balance, right, between having, you know, resources, available funds, a continued capital plan, but also, you know, being realistic that, you know, people, you know, need to live with these taxes as well.
Counsel Preston?
Thank you. If I could ask a follow-up. So, why would you recommend that we utilize the free cash to cut the tax rate as opposed to putting it toward CIP projects that we would be bonding for? So, you know, ultimately, obviously, if we're bonding for these projects, we're going to have to pay the interest on those funds. So, why would it not be more advisable to utilize the funds in that way as opposed to utilizing it to bring down the tax rate?
Sure, of course. I'm a little biased. I would like to, you know, maintain as much capacity and reserves as we would like in this city. So, of course, if you ask me, would I rather spend $400,000 to reduce our borrowing? Of course, I would. That, you know, frees up our borrowed capacity and keeps our reserves, especially at a healthier level. I guess it's kind of, you know, where do you strike that balance between kind of keeping that year-over-year increase in taxes at kind of a reasonable level versus really, you know, maintaining that free cash for these other uses?
All right. Counsel Cameron was next, and then Counsel Wallace.
I could keep listening to people and then change my mind on what I'm about to say. So, my mind is still open. But, yeah, I mean, the bottom line is no matter whether this is a plea for let's fix our streets and sidewalks and capital improvements or let's cut taxes for our residents, both of which are extremely, you know, reasonable goals. And we've heard lots about both of those things. You know, on the campaign trail, people want things and they don't want to pay for them. And I think, you know, that's human nature. You know, wherever we end up on this, whether it's, you know, in the original proposal, the $200-ish, $200-ish thousand of free cash, or now, we're at, you know, the mayor's proposal, his compromise was 402, we're either going to save people 20 bucks a year on their increase, right, because everybody is going up, and, you know, and forego several hundred thousand dollars. I mean, neither is gonna, you know, whichever way this pans out, people should not be thinking out in the community that, wow, I got a great deal on my taxes. That really, they're going to go down. No, they're going to go up a little bit less. And, you know, you can only go so far with a few hundred thousand dollars, whether it's, you know, any of the capital projects that we know we need as opposed to the ones we want. So, you know, I'd be open to the, you know, the mayor's compromise or the original $200 and $80,000. And I'm pretty sure we did use free cash from time to time in prior councils. I can't verify that, and I did not attend the Budget and Finance meeting. But it is somewhat unusual for us to be using free cash for this purpose. But, you know, I certainly heard from a lot of people who, you know, middle-class, upper-middle-class, working-class, fixed incomes, it's an expensive place to live, and if we can defray it a little bit, you know, I'm for that. But again, I don't, you know, despite all the storming and thundering, you know, we're not that far apart. People's taxes are going to go up. I think our overall future is going to have to be some modest growth, whether that's in some of the, you know, places that we talked about, like Story Ave or other places, or, you know, some growth that's not going to add to our overall level of expenditures too much. But we're gonna, you know, need to continue reining in spending, and that's been said many times in the last year. So, we need to be very careful about what sort of new debt we're taking on, because it is, you know, this is a flat tax rate. This isn't, we don't get to tax the rich more than lower-income people. This is a flat rate across the board. So, yeah, I'm open to hearing what others are going to say, and then we'll hopefully bring this in for a landing tonight.
Just a quick, just a quick point of information. The information that you mentioned is on Slide 60.
Yeah.
It's the history of the use of free cash.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you.
Counsel Wallace, and then back to Counsel Wright.
If I may not have to stand, thank you.
You're good.
So, I definitely agree with giving some back to the residents. I think it's a good show of effort, and anything helps, can help them out. And in the past, I voted for free cash to go back to reduce the tax rate. At the same time, I recognize that there are many needs that we still need to fund. For example, we had our Public Works and Safety Committee meeting last week, and we were reviewing the road plan, which we're going to have another meeting or two on and bring it back to the council for the last meeting. And the theme there is that we are significantly underfunding our streets and sidewalks. We could use more money. We have the five-year plan, and that's great. But what is not funded, there is a safety projects list that was provided, as requested, but many of them are not funded at all. We had some petitions that didn't show up on the plan, or there's no funding mechanism for some of these streets. So, the fact that the safety projects aren't being funded, that to me is the number-one reason for government, is to protect the health and safety of our residents, especially vulnerable populations, children, elderly, those with disabilities. And we have areas where you can't even get to a park or a school safely. And this has been going on for years and years and years. So, if there would be, I would be okay with allowing some of the free cash to go to these kinds of projects. But I would want it to be conditioned that they are going to go to these projects and not get spent somewhere else. Because what's happening with our streets and sidewalks is we're not necessarily committing to specific projects, and they kind of get lost at the end. And as a result, as a ward counselor, your residents are always asking, when is this going to get done? When is this going to get done? And I think our streets and sidewalks, safe crossings, anything to improve the experience of everybody, I think that's a benefit that could help everybody. So, if we're going to put free cash or keep that, I'm not making a motion. I'm just throwing this out there for ideas. I don't even know if you can condition it, but I would love to see it go to street sidewalks or the safety projects list. Thank you.
Counsel Wright?
No, that's all I wanted to add.
All right. Anyone that hasn't spoken yet? All right, I'll do round two. Counsel Vogel had his hand up, and then we'll come back to Counsel Zede.
Thank you, Counsel President. Just reiterating that, you know, the Finance Director has stated again, you know, what the way that he would like to have it. And if we're going to give back this little bit, or soften the blow, if you will, this little bit, how are we going to manage the blow when we run out of free cash if we have a wicked switcher and we need snow nights? So, we're going to overspend, you know, and not have the money. I mean, there's a lot of things down the road. There's a lot of things in front of us, and a minor tax cut is not the way to manage it. And again, I will argue all night day that having free cash, that free cash is not representative of over taxation. It just plain and simply is not even said. It may be fanciful to want it, but it is not true. It is not over taxation.
All right.
So, last year, when we talked about using free cash to ease the tax rate, we talked about what it is next year. What happens next year? Well, we're in next year. And as the Finance Director says, yeah, we're caught in this whirlpool now. We did it last year, and now we have to do it again this year. And, you know, to use the burden, and that's going to continue on now. We need to stop it, and we need to stop it now. We don't need to, we don't need to set aside, essentially what we're doing, is 1.4 million dollars. We don't need to set aside that, the capital improvement. We can do that as it comes. Let it come down the road, and we'll discuss it at that point in time. And those debates will go on, and if they come through this committee, you know, we've got the rules to consider. So, I just don't understand why this conversation is going on. It just doesn't make any sense. We have the Finance Director saying he would rather not. And then we're going, oh, we would rather do it. And that doesn't make any sense to me.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Counsel Zede, and then Counsel Wright.
Okay.
And then Counsel Con.
Thank you, President. So, I'm taking off my chair hat and just speaking for myself, at least at the beginning of this comment. So, first of all, I'm sort of a little bit incredulous, I guess. I mean, I hear some very clear talking points about experts and AAA bond rating and financial policy, which doesn't have anything to do with the City Council because we don't create the financial policy or pass it. We're a public body beholden to the residents. So, we come here to debate what we think the residents want, what we think the residents need. The financial policy is an administration guidance document, and they could essentially write whatever they want. That's actually been the subject of quite a bit of debate. So, the reason I'm incredulous is none of this came up in committee, and all of a sudden, now, there seems to be a chorus of conversation around a very specific set of ideas or talking points. The second thing is, it's sort of amazing how many amorphous numbers there are in here, and the ones that are hard numbers seem to have the least weight in the conversation. The concept of spending 1.4 million dollars on capital is sort of an amorphous number. I mean, we have a capital improvement plan, and we sit around this room in the spring, and we say, it's a nice planning document. Doesn't mean we're going to do all the stuff. There's no funding here. And then sometimes we have commenters saying, but you have it in the CIP. And many councilors are quick to remind them that CIP is not a funded document, so that doesn't mean anything anyways. And so, for me, one thing that really upsets me personally, having been on the council for this long, and sort of you heard the leading edge of it from the Ward Four councilors, the process is all wrong. I mean, you basically are trying to do things backwards. When I stand up on the floor and say, hey, we really should bake capital into the operating budget, because then we could have a proper debate about, are we going to spend it on roads and sidewalks? Or are we just going to wait until we have a bucket full of change at the end of the year and then save it from giving it back to the taxpayers? But don't worry, we know better. We'll spend it on the things you want us to, but not really, because if that funding request never materializes, we actually have no control over it. How is anybody supposed to work in this environment? I mean, you are supposed to stand up, in my opinion, as for myself, as a ward counselor, and advocate for my ward. My ward wants sidewalks. Okay, so how do I do that exactly? So, let's say tonight, and this is where I'm going to get to eventually, because I need to kind of help with the procedure a little bit, because we're, I don't actually know what people's position is, and it's making it harder to debate what we're going to do here. But, you know, we can't earmark the money, right? That's our charter limitation. We can't say, fine. We can negotiate for that if there's a willingness from the administration to say, transfer some of it to some other account, maybe to the streets and sidewalks or the traffic safety line, for example. We could try, but we have no formal power to do it. So, to me, the heart of this problem all goes back to a faulty process, where the budget needs to have, if this is truly what you want, then you would vote for a budget that says, we're going to spend $500,000 on capital, and we're going to define what those capital items are going to be in the spring. And you would not argue the constant word that I hear, which is flexibility. Just want the flexibility. We'll let you know when we get there. We might need a truck, we might need this, we might need that. And the pendulum really hasn't swung. I remember standing on this floor, gosh, six or seven years ago, passing a resolution, asking for $10,000 a capital year. I thought it would be a good starting point, conversation, have something. Maybe eight of it gets assigned and two of it gets left as, you know, unknown, and we'll figure it out as we go. There was no appetite on behalf of the former administration, and we just keep talking about flexibility endlessly. But residents don't want flexibility. They want to know that their priority is being funded. So, to bring it back to this specific thing, first of all, we're talking about $120,000 if you're using the 280 and the 402 as your markers. That's how much money we're talking about. I personally think that it is a different debate when you're having it now, and this is kind of my point about process. Once it drops to free cash like this, I support giving it back to the taxpayers, because I think we have abdicated the opportunity to have a good process. This idea that we're just going to keep it in, and then next year, we'll wait until some request comes in, robs us, and more importantly, the taxpayers of the priorities conversation. Did you really want to spend the money on another truck? Would you have wanted it back if it was for a truck? Or would you have not wanted it back if it was for sidewalks? And the likelihood that we get to have that debate tonight is zero, because that's a long conversation. That's a budget-level conversation. It's a CIP-level conversation. And it's not fair to make, and several councilors have now made it, well, I'm standing here for the sidewalks. And it just, it's too, it's not fair. It's not right, because you actually don't know that that's the case. It could go to something no one cares about, but, you know, but we need it, or something like that. So, to help with the process, now I'm going to take that hat off, the budget. We have the motion on the floor is to use $402,000, resulting in a tax rate of $9.96 per thousand. In order to effectuate that, there has to be a positive vote on this order at 9.96. Then there has to be a positive vote on the revised transfer to make the money available to effectuate that transfer. If we want to have a debate about the transfer amount, which I If we want to have a debate about the transfer amount, which I wasn't expecting, to be honest, because this didn't come up in committee, then what I would recommend respectfully is that I'll pull back my motion on this order, and we should actually deal with the transfer first. And if council wants to motion to, you know, use less resulting in a higher tax rate, then we actually should have that conversation first, because if we pass a tax rate, it's wrong or different, then we'll have, you know, just to do things sequentially. So I want to remind everybody that we're at 402. That number cannot go up unless somebody from the administration stands up and says they will accept that. It can go down to zero, if you wish, but that would need to be, that wouldn't be a cut of the, of the transfer. And then, whatever it gets cut to, it could get cut again to zero, or it could get cut to the, back to the 202, which would take us to 997. But that's effectively where this debate is, and I'm not sure we're having the right conversation yet.
So, there are two more folks that want to speak, and then we'll come back to what you were just originally saying. So, Counsel Wright, and then Counsel Khan.
So, I'm confused. We get a memo from the mayor, who represents the administration, to recommend a certain amount to go towards free cash. We ignore that, and we focus on this one section in that memo that talks about the $700,000 as something that we should have in the system. Why? We have a recommendation from the mayor, from the administration, to spend the money that they've recommended. Frankly, if I was the mayor, I'd be really upset with my department head undermining my presentation to the council. I didn't get a resounding voice from Director Manning saying, "Yep, this is what we agreed on. This is the memo that was submitted by the mayor. This is the position of the administration." Secondly, we will more than likely, and Director Manning can agree or disagree, we will more than likely generate another $2 to $3 million worth of free cash this year in the budget that's going to be presented to us. So, the $700,000 will be, that'll be a, that'll be just a moment in time, because the next time free cash gets certified, we'll have the same $3 million we've had every year for the last five years. So, this whole conversation is not really based in reality, in my opinion. I will vote in favor of keeping the money that the administration has brought forward to us as a cut, as a, as a reduction in the tax rate, because year after year, we have the same $3 million in free cash every year.
Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Counsel President. First of all, free cash has, you know, there's a couple of good resources. The DOR website shows the history of free cash over the last five years. Hasn't always been 3 million, so it's actually interesting to kind of trace that back. But the other thing you also get is, you could see tax rates in the whole 351 municipalities, and they're ranked from lowest to highest. So we're out of the 351, we're around, I think we're 25th or 26th in the lowest ranking. So, a couple of things, though, I just wanted more just informationally to state those two things. But more importantly, and I've heard this so many times before, and I have to say, as a city counselor, whatever happens in committee, we're absorbing information, just because we may not have brought up new things, or as we do our own research later on. We have 11 folks here, 11 folks who are very busy as well, and we're talking to residents all the time, even after committee meetings. But it sometimes feel like, very much like, you can't change your mind when you're in this chamber. And I, and I get really frustrated with that, because to me, it's a way of saying, you know, just, you know, whatever you say, just rubber stamp it from that point. And I, so I don't do that. I do like to continue thinking and looking. I don't want to be called a flip-flopper, because that's a great way to just also label someone. But no, you want to do what's best, because we have not finalized anything till we're here in this room, city council meeting on TV or on Zoom. But you are seeing us at this time trying to figure things out, ask the right questions, get to a place where each person here who's voting is voting with the best intention in mind, and can go to sleep feeling good about how they talked and what they said in this, in this chamber. What hits me the most, and why, and I even said this in the committee, and people could listen to it, I always ask, "What's the practice of using free cash? What's the benefit of that?" So if I wanted to walk away and do my research and see what makes sense, I think I have that, that I could do that. I also know how much things are costing us, and that's the only reason why I'm bringing this up. We talked about Hale Street, getting a sidewalk, and trying to get money to even be able to do the engineering assessments, or to get that done. Can that be $250,000, or can any of this money be spent on something like that? Those are real projects, those are real needs. So, I also want to go back to another point, and I really commend, I think it was the counselor, the Ward Four counselor, yeah, we can't earmark things, but there are areas where the public is looking for, when it's safety, on streets and sidewalks, or just on roads. There are a lot of competing needs. And knowing all of that, that's why I rose originally to talk about this, and why I'm looking at this memo, which is new. And I do want to point that out. This is a new memo, so we're getting new information. It's okay to question that, we should be able to. So, again, I hope folks know that I, in terms of going back to getting the process completed, I would be willing to go back to the original amount that the administration said, $280,000 around, with some change. But here's what I also want people to know, if you watch our meeting from committee of the whole, it was almost like we were just trying to figure, given that temperature chart, where does it look good? Where, there's very limited information. You're looking at one graphic, when you have to look at a bigger picture than that one graphic. And that's the one thing, this is not easy. Tax setting is not easy, it takes many elements to understand. And I appreciate where we were trying to move in that, but I do think, going back to, now in hindsight, after hearing this conversation, other conversations, that original request, which did come from administration, administration only reacted because of what we did during that committee meeting. And that committee meeting doesn't mean we were all yet well-informed or knew the direction of what we want to do. So, I am willing, at this point, when we're talking about maybe an amendment, I don't know if there's going to be one to be made, but that is what I would like to do, and I cannot remember now, because I could make that amendment, but I don't know if anyone's made an amendment yet. So, I will sit and wait to see where we are with process on the transfer.
Just a point of procedure. We had Order 506 on the floor. I understood that the chair withdrew that, which I think is...
Well, I think, I think, I hadn't yet, but now I'm going to, because I think it makes the most sense, and then I will, I will bring out transfer...
And who's the second on that? Is that you? You agree to the...
Okay, then, and then, if, so that's withdrawn. So now I'll make a motion to approve Transfer 176 revised, and then somebody could amend that amount down.
You'll second that?
And then, just so, it's a motion approved as it is, as revised.
So right now, the Transfer 176 is on the floor, motion approve that at 402.
Correct.
Okay. Discussion, so I saw Counsel Cameron's hand first, and then Counsel Khan.
I'll make an amendment to reduce that 402, 989, back to the mayor's original 280,000 and $978.
Second. Discussion. Counsel Zied, then Counsel Donahue.
Oh, it was me, not...
Oh, sorry.
I just want to ask a question. Why? The administration came back with a number the second time that made sense, so we're going to cut 200,000. Where's that 200,000 going to go? Anyone know? Or are we just kind of, just throwing flags around and banging our chest over something silly? It's pretty disgusting, actually, to sit here and to hear not all residents' tax rate matters, when I have Ward Six, people on fixed incomes, and $20 could matter to somebody. We're not wiping out free cash, we can't earmark it, but we're sitting here just throwing snowballs at each other over 20, 40 bucks. Well, that matters to some people, and I'm sorry if it doesn't matter to everybody, but to people in my ward, it matters to. So, to be quite frank, this process is pretty gross. We're really bickering over a couple hundred thousand dollars, we don't know what's going on. The spending's out of control, that's point blank. We do this process wrong, the budget is set, and then we chase our tail to catch up with it every single year. Don't you think we should set what our budget is after we know what our tax rate is, after what we can afford? Or is that just out the window? So, I'm, you can make faces all you want.
No, the budget's already set, this is...
It's honestly, it's a backward process. And what we're doing right now is, is pretty disgusting. This motion that's on the floor to take away free cash, for what? To prove a point?
Thank you, Counsel Lang. Next hand that was up was Counsel Donahue's, and then I saw...
Thank you, President. Couple of things I'd like to address. First of all, I am sorry that I was not able to attend the budget and finance meeting on the 20th with a vomit-inducing migraine. Sorry about that. So, yes, I did not get to express any of my questions or concerns at that time. So, yes, today on the floor is when I'm doing that. What, what I'm also hearing that's a little off-putting is that, I don't find this disgusting. I find this to be the conversation we should be having, because while it was a sure pleasure to not have to go door-to-door for the past six months in Ward Six and talk to all the people, I didn't have that pleasure in Ward Two. And I can tell you what my constituents want. They want to be able to walk on their sidewalks. They don't want to walk in the street. I don't want to walk in the street. Our taxes are meant for our town, for the betterment of everyone in the community. You can't fix a tire for the $50 tax break you're going to get when you pop it on one of our roads. You cannot pay a hospital bill with $50 when you break your ankle on the sidewalk. We have expenditures that seem to be rising, but we also have needs that we are not addressing at all. Is it, is it, do we have the choice? No. Does the administration have the choice? Yes. In every conversation I have with our Director of DPS, when I have to go to him with XYZ problem on a street, or a sidewalk, or a tree, or a bottle, or some other major concern, where's the money? How do we pay for it? I don't have any money, I'm sorry, Counsel Donahue, we have no money. They're not encouraged to ask, because there's nothing to be had. But we want to give back a token. We want to give back, you know, a good-feeling token, to say that we were really sorry that taxes continue to go up, but, you know, here's, here's a little bit of savings for you. And I'm sorry, but even on a fixed income, I guarantee you, they'd rather be able to safely walk to the pharmacy, or to the store, or to the schools. And I just don't see that happening. I don't think that blanketing the city with a little token, good feel, give back, is the way to get the city accessible and inclusive for everybody. So I'm just, I just, we can trust administration to know what they're doing. We can really trust the experts to know what they're doing. What we can't do is expect our mayor to be a CFO, because he's not. And when our chief, you know, finance director is saying, "This isn't really the best practice," I really kind of think we should heed that. And to say that it's disingenuous for someone who knows that as their business to say it against what maybe, you know, was recommended by administration, isn't as bad as all it seems. It's someone who knows a little bit more is saying what they really think, and I respect that. So, with that all yield, thank you.
So, just for the record, we've got Counsel Cameron, Counsel McCauley, Counsel Khan, Counsel Zied, and Counsel Wright, in that order.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, and my battery's going to die, so if anyone's listening to me in the basement, I'd love to, love to get a fresh battery. I don't, I don't pack my own backup. What we're talking about is $122,000 difference between 402 and 280. Whichever way we go on it, I mean, my, the amendment is to try to get us somewhere in between the people who probably don't want to spend any free cash, and the people that may want to spend more than 400 in $2,000. So, nobody's going to get a big tax cut one, one way or the other. Nobody's going to get every street and sidewalk paved, one way or the other. We're really kind of tinkering, and there's a lot of passion at the margins. And I think, yeah, we are supposed to represent the citizens. I think the original recommendation from the mayor and the, and the finance director was reasonable to use, you know, $280,000, which again, is what the amendments speaks to. And, yeah, I mean, I think you, there is probably the mayor trying to, you know, you know, act based on the committee recommendation, and I wasn't there as well, and I'm not going to be at every committee meeting, and I've been through many of these discussions, so I'm generally familiar with the concept. But I think this is, this is a good compromise, and I hope my fellow constituents will support it.
Yeah, I will, I will vote no on the amendment. I do love the compromise, as well as put forward by the mayor. I do agree that there's a lot of passion along the margins here. For the delta of the money that we're talking about, we're not paving roads, we're not putting a new sidewalk in, we're not putting a new roof on, it's going to go into a pile of money, and it's going to be spent through negotiation with all of us. And so, but that's the way this works along the way. Again, my opinion has always been that I think the residents should deserve the benefit of the doubt, and whenever we have a doubt, I think they should deserve more of the money along the way. I do agree with the comment made by the at-large councilor, who said, you know, with the increase of other fees like excise and other things, we are going to, by June, we're going to have $2.5 to $3 million of free cash, because that's what we do. We're an efficient organization in terms of spending and in terms of controlling that. We do have good fiscal checks and balances along the way. That requires us as a council to provide the appropriate oversight on spending and transfers and things like that. And I think overall, we do strike a good balance along the way. But to, but we should, I'd suggest we dial back some of this passion, that we're going to solve the world's problems by not giving $120,000, whatever way it works out, whatever the will of the council is along the way. As we vote on that, obviously, the residents will get a smaller increase, one way or the other. But I for one, in this particular instance, I will vote for, I will vote against this, and I will vote for the original. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Counsel Khan.
I didn't have my hand up.
Okay, Counsel Zied.
Thank you. I just, I did want to speak on this motion specifically, so I will oppose this motion as well. First of all, as I mentioned, I think this is, it's not, once it drops to free cash, I am in support of giving it back to the taxpayers. I will not vote for higher taxes in this form. If there's a budget that comes next year, and the sidewalk traffic safety line is increased fourfold, and we turn out a slightly less free cash, or less free cash, that's fine, because I sort of got my bite at the apple, and the residents of Ward One had their voice heard during the budget process here. You're coming in at the end of the game and saying, "Hold on, I want to hold it back for something else." And I just don't find that to be good planning, I don't find it to be good process, I don't find it to be transparent. And again, most important, there's probably one, one word that's most important, and that's prioritization. I mean, we can all think of a lot of projects we'd like to see done, in our wards, if you're a ward counselor, and beyond. But absent an actual debate on that, you just can't just leave money out there and say, "Yeah, you know what, I'm really hoping it gets spent on what I want instead of something else." And that's just not right. There's a lot of things out there in the ether right now that we're all nervous about, like Woodyear and so forth. But right now, you're looking at money that when we did the budget process, we either were unwilling to raise our, we couldn't find a use for it at that time, or we weren't willing to. Either way, that's, that's how this money largely got created, was if we wanted to have budgeted a million more dollars, we could have, and we would have ended up with no free cash, and we'd say, "Well, we spent every penny to the budget that we had set. Residents had their say, this is how we decided we were going to do it." So I'm strongly opposed on that front. I do want to say and acknowledge that this is a, you know, it's a proxy fight, I think, in some ways, and that's okay, because you have to have it in some form. But you are hearing the passion about trying to rein in some of the spending. And that's a big point of difference and contention, I think, amongst members of the council and members of the community. And it's okay, you can disagree and still be polite about it, but my view is that we have struggled to rein in the spending. And I said this in committee, but this is the real affordable housing debate to me. The idea of building some units that are affordable at a cost to the taxpayers, which somehow is supposed to help everybody, is hard for me to buy into. But here, you're talking about directly saying, "You will get a bill for less." I mean, that to me is a pretty powerful thing. And to stand here and say, "It doesn't make it too big of a difference to many people," or "Some people are more than happy to just pay the taxes, and they get their proposed value," or whatever, or, as one counselor put it, "It's a flat tax," which is sort of a tough one, because actually, if your house is worth more, you... a tough one, because actually, if your house is worth more, you pay more. I think everybody sort of hopefully knows that, so it's progressive in that sense. So, I'm just not seeing the logic here. And last piece I just have to address, and I know we're all got our pet peeves out tonight, but I have a tremendous amount of respect for the Finance Director, I really do. This is his vocation. But you know what? I went to school for finance, too. I spent years in the area. I've spent years as Chair of Budget and Finance. And so, I do feel like I have expertise in the area, but most importantly, I have expertise in the public policy. That's actually the point of us. If we were going to run the city based on a book or a manual, we would just do that. But there has to be a voice for the residents. And to me, the voice is saying, inflation's kind of really painful for all of us, and it is showing itself on the city side, as the At-Large Councillor mentioned. That's hard. We have to contend with that. But when are you guys going to pull it in? When are you going to rein it in and slow this thing down and just talk about endless capital projects and insufficient funds to pay? So, I'm strongly opposed to this. I like the 525. I didn't have a problem with it. And so, we can debate which one is the middle, because if, you know, if you're at 0 or 525, you say, "Oh, this is the middle." But if you're saying 202, and actually, in committee, we started with one councillor asking for like a million dollars, then you could say the middle's 750. So, my point is, at 400 and $2,000, I don't believe you're overtaxing free cash. The 1.4 is not a real number. That has to be debated. You could easily stay at the $700,000 line by spending $100,000 less on capital, which is the debate. I'm saying I'm okay with that. And there's a million other ways to do it. But just so you know, my guess is, if you claw back this free cash, the most likely thing you'll get is more DPS vehicles, which, don't get me wrong, are important and needed. But this romantic idea that it's going to come in the form of gold-plated sidewalks is probably just, I think, a little bit of a bridge too far. I yield.
Thank you, Counsel Zied. So, Counsel Wright, and then Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Counsel President.
That's okay. I've got nothing to say.
My only... What I'd like to say is, I'd like to remind my fellow councillors that what we're talking about tonight is what we really need to talk about in the budget. Because the budget's already done. We've committed to spending that money. Please be very thoughtful next time we have a budget to review. And be aware that the decisions we make, when we make that budget, are what leads to this conversation tonight, so that we can be thoughtful about how we look at the budget that the administration provides to us. And that way, we can do our arguing in the proper venue, which is when we talk about and approve a budget.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Counsel Khan?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just to add on to the public service announcement, too. CIP, sorry, while we know it's a projection, first year of CIP is something we do look at, and that's also tax that on as well. And my other point, you know, just because I heard, you know, we talked about affordable housing, what's the real affordable housing conversation? To me, it really isn't the tax rate setting, but that $120,000 that I am talking about, I mean, wouldn't that be great if we could have a fund where we could help people with their property taxes, maybe? Those who really need the help? So, let's just keep that in mind. I mean, we didn't even touch on this topic for the affordable housing issue, and even just people being able to stay here of those areas, when we see the breakdown of the house composition and what the assessed values are, where the majority of residents sit. There is a real need, a real need for help. What I'm just saying here, this $120,000 that we're skimming out from free cash, isn't, as we know, going to solve all of our problems, but this gives you an idea where just even an amount like $120,000, if well allocated, and I know administrations listening and working on this, too, can help some residents that really do need it.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Further, Counsel Wallace?
Sure. Just to follow up on the amendment, I am also going to oppose it. I feel like I have been educated to a certain degree about the process and where this should fall. And I agree, like, these last-minute discussions of, "Oh, this should go here, and this should go here." It should happen during the budget process. And the hard part is, the councillors can't up the budget numbers. Only the administration can do that. But I think when the road plan comes out, we're going to see. We need more money. And it's too bad that that wasn't addressed this year. However, perhaps it can be addressed very thoughtfully next year. So, you know, hoping that a project will get done, "Oh, we could use it on this or that." In my experience of four years now, you know, I might have kind of bought into that, like, "Oh, well, we have this money, we could use it." Unless it's actually committed and voted on, I can't tell residents something's going to happen, because I've seen promises come and go in, you know, the past two administrations. And if we can't earmark it, that kind of answers that question. So, I agree. I think it's best to give it back to the people with some sort of compromise. And I think what, you know, what was put on the table with the 400-ish makes sense. So, I'll be saying no to this amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Preston?
Thank you. So firstly, let me say that I agree with my fellow At-Large councillor. You know, this really... The discussion about where the money is going is really better handled in the budget than here. But I do have to say, I really bristle at the idea of calling this, what we're doing here, as disgusting and gross. Frankly, I think this body's job is to debate exactly things like our tax rate. And so, I definitely don't consider this a disgusting or a gross discussion. And the... Our, sorry, Ward 6 councillor also asked, you know, "Where does this money go?" Well, it goes back to free cash. That's where it goes. The $120,000, if we don't spend it, it goes back into free cash. And frankly, at the end of the day, you know, I have learned a lot in the last few days around this. And to me, that $120,000 is better spent to not necessarily be earmarked for any particular project, because we can't do that, right? And that's a very fair thought. But where it is better spent is to go against something else that we're going to need to bond, right? So, yes, maybe that we save a resident $20 today as they have their tax rate reduced, right? But at the end of the day, if they end up spending $40 to get a bond on those $20, then they're not really saving money in the end. So, I have to say, I now stand convinced that the right thing to do is to go back to the administration's original plan and whatever. I'll vote yes on the revised transfer of 176. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lane, you've already spoken on this one. I think everyone's had their chance to speak. All right. Roll call.
So, roll call on the motion to amend back to 289,78,000 on transfer number 176. Counselor Wright?
No. I'm sorry. That was... Just because it's so hard to hear. Is that the original... That was back to the original proposed number by the mayor. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. I'm looking right at it. Transfer 176 was... Came in as 289,78, and then it was amended to 402. And this is a motion to amend it back to 280 and change.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It just gets a little open in the conversation. Thank you very much.
Okay. Roll call.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Over here.
Counsel Wallace?
No.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 5.
Shocking.
So, on the floor is a motion to approve transfer at 289,78.
Roll call.
So, roll call to approve transfer 176 as originally written at 289,78. Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Over here.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 4.
So, now we'll bring motion to approve 506. And this time, I'm the sponsor, so I'm going to just make it a friendly to be congruous with the 280. So, now it would be $9.97 per thousand in both blank spaces.
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Zied?
I think, hopefully, it'll be my last comment. So, I do also like the debate. I think it's a good debate. What frustrates me is that it is disjointed, you know, from the budget and so forth. And I just haven't... In my 10 years, I basically have spent my entire career trying to hold the line, slow down the spending, at least to some degree. I would say largely unsuccessfully, but you try, because I really believe, deep down, that... So, I'm coming up on 10 years of having lived in the city, and I think it's changed a lot in that 10 years. And like most change, some of it's good and some of it's bad. But I think the actions we take in this room are having a really serious impact on a lot of people. And I think this, it's kind of... I guess what's tough for me, it's a bit insidious, the idea that the taxes don't matter in some ways. I mean, I know that that's true for some people. I just know it is. There are some people who have the means and can afford to pay it, and would say, if you ran into them on State Street, "You know what? Like, I'm okay. Another $100 a year, I'm okay." But what I've noticed is, it's death by 1,000 paper cuts in both directions. So, when we're spending, the most common argument I hear is, "It's only $20 a year. It's only $38 a year. It's only $50 a year." I mean, I've heard that parking garage, mostly with capital projects, all the way through, all the way up. Ironically, Woodyear doesn't seem to be enjoying the same grace that we're giving to other projects, but there may be other reasons for that. But the problem with this is, it's hard to draw a straight line from here to somebody not being able to stay in the city. But it is happening. And I think if you've lived here many... I'm still a new person at 10 years, right? That's the old joke in Newburyport. You're the new guy until you've lived here for 250 years, which far exceeds the human average lifespan. So, but it is happening. I mean, you can see it. I think if you think intuitively about your own neighborhood and who lived there 10 years ago, my... Having had family with longer history in the city, going back to when the South End was untouchable and those sorts of things, you think about that. And so, it's death by 1,000 paper cuts. When we're spending, it's only $30 more a year. And when we're cutting, we're only saving people $30 a year. But then you add the 30, and the 30, and the 50 here, and you've got a grand per year in the last two years of increase alone. And so, you're adding like $100 a month next year. And there's a lot of systemic imbalances with our... With municipal finance, you know, we've got this 2.5, but we're often giving unions raises in excess of the 2.5, which we have to, right? To be competitive, to be fair, to be, you know, compensating people for the work they do. So, we're just stuck between all of it. But my closing comment is really to residents. At the end of the day, as much as any one of the 11 of us wish we had superpowers, we just don't. And so, bottom line is, when you ask us for projects, we want to do them, because we understand there's a good argument to be made for all of them. I really think so. I mean, there have been some on occasion that I've stood here and said, "This is just a horrible idea." But for the most part, they're all defensible, like, in a lot of ways, common sense, and a lot of ways, desirable. But if you can't... If we can't pull it in, I think what I've been thinking a lot about is, what does Newburyport look like in another 10 years? And my answer is, with what we're doing in this room, and things that we can't control, the gentrification of Newburyport will be 100% complete. There'll be nobody left here who is, you know, of average means. They just won't mean... Again, there are outside forces, home prices, real estate, all that kind of stuff. But then, this is important. This is meaningful. If you are... Have your home paid off, because your family's lived here for 100 years, this is the one bill that, like, no matter what you do, it just keeps on rolling, and we want to build a new this or a new that. Here's another 40 bucks a year. Here's another 80 bucks a year. So, that's my thought to residents, really, is you hold the power. It's the projects you ask us for that we try our best to fund. But I think we are having a profound effect on the gentrification of Newburyport, and I don't personally think it's a very positive thing. And that's why I voted against, even as insignificant as you may think it is, and why I will vote here against this tax rate as well. You are really changing the city, and we'll have to think about whether that's in a positive direction, or for boxing people out and gentrifying people out because of what we're doing. I yield.
Counsel Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, this is a great conversation, because us councillors, yeah, some of the residents, but actually, there's a lot here. And if we look at... And it's interesting, this conversation has led to talking about gentrification of Newburyport. I ask and I challenge everyone to look a little bit more differently, too. Our zoning and how we've created the neighborhoods and communities around us have a huge part to do with it. So, let's talk about that. Let's look at our housing production plan. There's so many more things that we need to peel away, and that's here in this room. So, I'd like to put a pin on that statement and say, "There's going to be actions brought up that every one of us can make to make it better here and make it more affordable, get more people here." So, I'm glad to hear this. This is really giving me a lot of encouragement, that we could bring forth some change. Look at our zoning, like I mentioned. Look at what we have for inclusionary zoning, too, in terms of what's being built here, that new growth we're talking about. And the last thing I want to say is local options, local tax options that this room could set. We talked earlier before about the seniors' means-tested types of tax exemption. That's what we do here, you guys. And I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of those programs come forth and be approved here by this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Further discussion? Zied, Counsel Donahue, Counsel Lane, and then Counsel Cameron.
Thank you, President. I do want to bring up the idea, and sort of tailing on the At-Large councillor, a homeroom petition, if the administration wanted to really make a difference and help homeowners that need it, if they put forth a homeroom petition that allowed us to take that money and actually designate it in a fund for people that actually need it beyond just having your house reassessed for a lower amount, that would make a difference. That's something I would get behind all day long. But to save 50 bucks for a millionaire? No. Sorry. That's not helping anybody. There's a lot of them in this town. And the gentrification? Yeah. That's nothing new. And I'm sorry, most everyone that I know is a part of it. Most of the people are gone already, long gone. So, if you don't want more gentrification and add to it, then let's explore more creative ideas and options to keep people in their homes, as well as revisiting our zoning and the housing plan. But really, a homeroom petition to have a pot of money for homeowners that are making less than $100,000 a year, less than $75,000 a year, less than $50,000 a year even, that would make a difference, those people on fixed incomes. But $20, whether it's for something new or to give it back, I just... It's a token. We need to do something serious. This isn't it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Donahue, Council Lane.
So I just want to clarify, what's gross is the fact that it doesn't matter to some people. So, it's across the board, yes, but to say, people will just pay it, that's fine. I can name fifteen people who it matters to in my ward, who are hanging on by a thread, who, yes, will have to eventually move out, because we're just going to spend endless amounts of money on parks, or Wadafund Park, for example. How much money we've spent on that thing in the last twenty years? Gross amount of money. We could have done all the streets and sidewalks in the city for that amount of money. The thing that the Ward One Councilor said that resonates with me is the gentrification of Newburyport. I'm from here, I was born and raised here. Milk Street was a lot different when I grew up on it than it is now. I joke, I say, if this fifteen-year-old me knew I lived on Hart Road, he'd probably kick the crap out of me, because he would have. And it means something to me, that, you know, I'm like the Ward Two Councilor, I know a lot of people that are still here, granted, there's not many, but, this is our hometown. This is where we grew up, this is where everyone wants to talk about historical preservation, talk about historical things. Well, the true history is the culture and the people of Newburyport. And we are pushing them out, what's left of what is, what I grew up in, in Newburyport. So, if we just wanted to, you know, blow up the whole thing, I mean, I might as well start looking in Southern New Hampshire for a house for myself, because I'm one of those people. I'm not a rich person, I don't make a lot of money. It matters to me, it matters to my neighbors on my street who have been there their whole lives, and, yeah, I do get passionate about it, and that's what's gross to me, is to say that those people don't, it doesn't matter. Twenty, forty bucks, doesn't matter. Ward One Councilor said it so perfectly, that it adds up and it matters. So, everybody wants to sit here and say, oh, we're going to take care of people and make it affordable. We don't. We really don't, at the end of the day. We don't care who lives on our streets, we don't care who is from here, we don't care about the history, we just care about how much money we can spend and, you know, move forward. Yeah, what are we moving forward about? We don't even have enough parking. We haven't had any increase in parking since 2017. Yeah, that's moving forward. Let's build a Field of Dreams for thirty million dollars and have nowhere for people to go. Retailers are struggling, so let's just push out all the mom and pop shops, too, while we're at it. They don't care. We can get, you know, designer names, we can have KARP come in, and, yeah, let's throw every single designer shop that we can, that, it doesn't matter, people can afford it here. It's Newburyport. I hate when I tell people now, I was from the South End of Newburyport, and they're like, ooh, so fancy. Not really. Not a single person in this room, aside from Chief Bradbury, could walk through the South End and not face somebody face-to-face and them say, who are you? And you know what? It sounds like it was rough, but it was also, I knew every single house, I knew who lived in every single house, I knew I was safe. I don't feel safe anymore here, because I don't fit in. I'm not that upper echelon, you know, one percenter. I love Newburyport now, this is where I do what I do, but, to go back to why I think it's gross, that's why. Because we just don't think it matters, because everybody has money here and we can afford it. So, to dovetail on what the Ward One Councilor said, I'd love to see us rein in some spending in the future, and really focus on what the priority is. Is it building a culture here, a good community? Or is it just, how many plaques can we get our name on, every single year? I'll just, I'll yield with that.
Thank you. Council Cameron.
Thank you. Yeah, just, I do think we should put a pin in it from now until the next budget season, and it's both a revenue and an expense, you know, problem. And I would say on the expense side, you know, I remember several conversations last year around some salaries, and the administration was trying to get people up to market levels. You know, assuming that was accomplished, I do think we're going to be looking at modest increases, if increases at all, on the city side, and that includes salaries, sorry, and, you know, certainly treating our unions fairly, but, you know, at some point, yeah, this has been pointed out several times, these sort of increases are really not sustainable without next year, everybody's taxes going up another four hundred or five hundred dollars. And, you know, there is a point, and, you know, where it's the one point two five and the one point five million dollar homeowners and condo owners that are going to be able to afford that, and it's not a big deal. But for middle class and lower, yeah, that's a huge hit, and I think that's a struggle. You know, those of you who either pay your property taxes, you know, through your bank with your mortgage payment, or whether you sign the check regularly, that's a big hit, when you're talking, you know, that kind of money. You know, eight thousand dollars a year, and more, if you own a home, that's more than the eight hundred thousand dollar median. On the revenue side, yeah, we've got to be looking at, you know, what I would call smart growth, like the Smart Growth District, in places where we can develop more and bring in more revenue. I think we should do that. I do think we should be hitting up our state officials for more local aid and educational funding, and Chapter Ninety money for streets and sidewalks. They seem to have kind of gotten off spot-free, again, over the last couple of years. When I first came into office in 2008, we had had big cuts on all of those fronts, and there was a big advocacy push to build that back up. So I think it's, you know, it's all of the above on the revenue side, and it's, you know, signaling to the administration, you know, let's come in with a lower budget amount, because we should be looking at, you know, keeping it, keeping it really tight this year, and in ongoing years. Maybe there are some efficiencies and, you know, losing some positions, you know, here, there, and everywhere, but, you know, it's really not sustainable. The conversation we had tonight was, I think, a lot of passion, but, you know, we kind of boxed ourselves in when we passed the budget. You know, that's been said several times, and it's absolutely true. So let's, you know, bring that mindset and these different ideas when we start to have the budget conversations.
Discussion. All right, roll call.
Mr. Roll Call on approving order five oh six. If I might, for the record, City adopts a tax rate of nine point nine seven per thousand for residential and open space, and nine point nine seven per thousand for CIP classes for FY 2024. Councilor Wright.
None.
Councilor Z.
No.
Councilor Cameron.
Yes.
Councilor Donahue.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
No.
Councilor McCauley.
Yes.
Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
No.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Seven-four. I believe we only need a simple majority to set that. Am I right? Ethan?
Correct.
Okay. Motion passes.
Motion to approve order five oh eight, approve of the pay prior year bills.
Second.
Well, it's another prior year bill. It's a thousand dollars, it was a DPS employee, took a course, and I, we did ask again of the Finance Director, you know, why such an extensive number of these this year, and his answer, and I think gets confirmed by sort of the orders we've processed, the bulk of it came out of DPS, and it was just because of a shift in the Director, Deputy Director, and Business Managers from all at the same time. So, I've given the talk on what prior year bills are, so I'll spare you, but it was three oh in committee.
Discussion. Roll call.
Approving order five oh eight. Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Sure.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is a motion to approve order five zero-nine, which is a gift acceptance from the Belleville Improvement Society for eight ninety-five.
Council Wallace.
For the record, I need to recuse.
But you can stay in your seat.
So, this is a gift from the Belleville Improvement Society, it's about nine hundred dollars. As you probably recall, we passed some CPA funds for the Rock Tower at the Atkinson Common, and while the work, while they were there and doing the work, the contractor, they discovered some extra work that they recommended on the ceiling, and they were already there and mobilized, so essentially, they just had the contractor tack it on, and the Belleville Improvement Society was kind enough to offer to pay. So the work is done, and it was three to zero in committee.
Thank you, Council Z. Discussion. Roll call.
Roll call, approving order five oh nine. Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Council Z.
Yes.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
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 Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Shane.
Yes.
And I believe the last one for tonight is a motion to approve transfer one seventy-five.
Second.
This is a free cash transfer of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and change, again, from free cash to the purchase of a fireboat. I will try and fill you in. I think we had a decent number of folks in committee with us, but, first thing is, it is coming out of free cash today, but the origination of the funds was, as you may recall, the prior fireboat, which was the second fireboat we had, we had accepted one, and then this second boat became available from the City of Portsmouth via the State of New Hampshire, and it was accepted, I want to say, back in 2019 or so, if memory serves. And unfortunately, the second boat did meet its demise at the bottom of the Merrimack, so it was settled out with insurance, and the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the settlement amount from the insurance. That settlement was received in the prior fiscal year, and as a result, and it wasn't encumbered or utilized yet, so it dropped to free cash. So that's where the funds are sort of coming from. And so today, this is a proposal to utilize that five fifty, again, from free cash, to purchase a brand-new fireboat. Just some details on the boat for your information. This is a twenty-nine-foot safe boat. It is three feet smaller than the prior boat that the city had. It is trailer-able. It is a purpose-specific boat, it's made for firefighting, it has a pump, and that sort of thing. It is a safe boat, which you may be familiar with, the orange boats, the Harbor Master has similar, conceptually, obviously. I presume this one will be red, but it'll be similar nonetheless. This boat has been specked out, it's an actual boat, it's coming out of Washington State, the pricing is based on a government contract that runs, I don't know, on some kind of annual basis, and has a timeline attached to it, which was one of the reasons we were addressing this request now. And may take a little while to get, just because of just supply chain and all that normal stuff. So that's about the boat. A lot of the conversation in committee, I would say, centered around two things. One was, you know, the option to utilize this money, these monies for other things. Could we do that? Should we do that? That sort of question. And then, the general concept around having a fireboat, does the city need it? What are the risks that are being mitigated? What are the other resources that are available? So, to try and address both of those, and Chief Bradbury's here, so you have his expertise for your questions, should you have any, but, it is the position of the Fire Chief that these funds, because they originated from a boat that originated from a grant from the Department of Homeland Security, that approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would need to be spent on a fireboat, or be presumptively returned back to the granting authority. That was the original amount of the grant, and, so he believes the funds really do need to be, must be spent on a fireboat, period. And then secondarily, was the need for a fireboat. So, the Chief explained that there are obviously a tremendous number of marinas, probably doesn't need to be explained, and the boats are worth considerably more, and there are risks around, if you had a fire at a marina, that it would be, could be catastrophic, and that it would be exponentially, especially difficult to fight that fire from land, because of distance and things like that. So, he feels that there's a strong need for a fireboat. The Harbor Master came to the committee as well, I think sharing similar thoughts, as did some of the marina owners as well, or operators anyways. Salisbury does have a fireboat, but, you know, it's, as with anything, it may be in service, it may not. So that's an opportunity for potential mutual aid, but, there were some fires this year that were discussed about, and then we talked about maintenance. The general concept is, it will be somewhere around five grand a year, maybe a little bit more in the first year, because it's a new boat with a break-in, and the engines will have to be done. So, all in all, I think hopefully that's a decent summation. It was two to one in committee. I was the dissenting vote, I can explain that, but I'll yield for now, but that's the committee report.
Thank you, Council Z. Discussion. Council Z.
Yeah, just to explain my vote, so, I did have a nice conversation with the Chief, and I just didn't find myself in agreement that the money had to be spent on a fireboat, and I understand the Chief's position, and I respect it, and I get the argument for it. I certainly understand why the State of New Hampshire or the City of Portsmouth would want the funds, because it puts them in the least risky position. My personal position is that I think spending it on anything fire-related would be sensible and defensible. This is my opinion, I don't know that there is a zero-risk option. I think spending the money on something completely different probably would not be advisable. Again, my opinion. Because I feel that way, and because I think that the Fire Department has so many extensive needs, I think we're aware of some of those, I just felt like these funds could have been used towards that purpose, but it's a respectful disagreement. It was two to one in committee, and that's the end of the story. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Z. Further, Council Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Yeah, I was one of the ones in favor of this, and I think a lot of it had to do with, just in conversations in committee, too, and I think the Chair did a good job summarizing it, but I do want to just advocate and support, because of the ways that communities support and help each other, even Salisbury, there is a lot of activity on the Merrimack. And the situations that have been happening, and the Chief sharing a lot of the kind of due diligence they're doing, but also trying to understand, you know, the type of boat that's being purchased, in terms of what the Harbor Master has, there's been a lot of things to kind of streamline, from a maintenance perspective, from the type of voting that they're looking at, what would be a long-term good investment, using the money from the insurance meant for this purpose. So to me, it was a no-brainer to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Khan. Further discussions? Roll call.
Motion to approve transfer one seventy-five. Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Z.
No.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Ten-one, motion passes.
That's it for business tonight. I just want to note, everybody, that Thursday is our last Budget and Finance Committee meeting of the session. I don't anticipate adding any meetings, so, on Thursday, we will address the gift acceptances that came in tonight, the holiday parking, we will continue, hopefully, with some resolution on the community impact fee on short-term rentals, as well as continue our work on the acceptance of the NOC tennis courts gift, which if, I just would encourage you to just at least peek at that one, so that you maybe can send me questions before we get to the floor. Just to telegraph, the only other two things we have in committee are the ARPA Amesbury Interconnect, which has been hanging out for a long time. I cannot speak for the committee, but I suspect this may be just received and filed, and will get refiled in the next session with updated information. This is per the administration, if it still makes sense. And I can say the same thing for transfer one fifty-three, which I would just remind you, was mostly already adjudicated. It was just the Atkinson project that was left, and it seems to me, it seems in conversations that receiving and filing it, in the interest of filing something new with updated numbers, because things are changing, will make sense in the new year, and we will have zero things left if we are able to accomplish those. So Thursday, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
I don't have any committee of the whole items, other than the ARPA Amesbury, but you're welcome.
All right, thank you, Council Z.
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Council McCauley.
Nothing tonight, Council President.
When's your next meeting?
Fifth.
Okay. General Government, our meeting's Monday night, Councilor, not Councilor, Director Port is going to be answering some of the questions on one of the communications, plan to have that, and we'll talk about order two thirty-nine, if we want to continue that to next year or not. And that's next Monday night at six o'clock. I see nothing in license and permits, planning and development.
Just a quick update on scheduling. We, our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, December seventh, at six P.M., I believe. And we've got a few, just administrative items that I imagine we would receive and file, unless we want to reignite the STRU discussion, which I don't think we do. And we do have an appointment this evening to, the CPC representative from the Planning Board will take that up. And we also have the Committee of the Whole, the zoning amendment regarding R3 and Global, and I think we would have that discussion that evening. I believe what we said, it seems like a long time ago, in the joint hearing with the Planning Board, is to work on it in committee this, this month, this coming month, but then carry it over to the next session, and then hopefully, nine of us will be up to speed on it, and we can hopefully bring that up for landing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cameron. Public Works and Safety, Counsel Wallace.
Yes. One item to discuss right now. Motion to receive and file Communication 516, the Snow and Ice Plan.
Second.
All right. We met last week with Director Wayne Amaral and Deputy Director John Carey, and we spoke about the Snow and Ice Plan, which probably looks very familiar. It's pretty much the same as it's been throughout the years, with a couple changes, if even. One thing to note, Deputy Director John Carey will be in charge of snow operations this year. Obviously, the Director will be helping him, but he is going to be the go-to person. So, one of the additions that they put on Page Three, alternate delegated parking areas, they added the park in, for the snow emergencies, they added the Park and Ride Lot at 90-story Avenue. So, apparently, they have spoken with Mastott, and that is an okay place to park, if you can get there, you know, if it's not too far. So, that was added to the plan. I don't think the blue lights changed, and they all are working right now. The plowing, let's see, they said they're in good shape for the contractors they have lined up. They're going to be using less salt this year, and looking into some alternative products. So, I think in the past couple of years, they've, they would salt sometimes heavily, you know, before a storm, or the night before a storm, and then sometimes you would see the salt blow off to the side of the road. So, I think they're going to be watching that a little more closely, just so they can help, you know, save money on some product. But, but I'll be curious to learn more about what alternative products they're also looking into. As far as sidewalks, I had asked, you know, the, the question we ask every year, who's clearing the sidewalks on Story Avenue? And Counsel from Ward Five has been talking with some representatives from Mastott, and has been able to work something out. And I asked the Director, would there be any chance that the city would be plowing some of these sidewalks, or priority sidewalks? And again, this is the same discussions we've had. I know in neighboring communities, sometimes the municipality will plow on the state sidewalks, if, say, they don't have any other sidewalks else to worry about, but the Director's comment was, we, they have so much to do in the city, that if something can be worked out with the, with the state, it makes much more sense to do that. So, that's going to be, that's the plan, to keep going in that direction. Another interesting thing that we talked about was with the merging with the Parks Department, there are going to be some efficiencies now with sharing of resources and equipment. So, that'll be interesting to see how that plays out, but it's, it's all one now, and hopefully, they can, you know, make, make things more efficient and clear, so that there's no staff kind of sitting there waiting, or there's like a good machine for one thing that couldn't be used in the past for another. Let's see. So, basically, we approved this three-zero in committee to receive and file, and that is it.
Counsel McCauley.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a, make a change to this on Page Three. And this was, this came in, this is new information that came in after the council meeting, after the committee meeting that went on there. On Page Three, in alternate delegated areas, what was included here was the Titcomb Street Parking Garage, which on initial reading makes sense, but then, as the Parking Department kind of went through this, they have logistical issues getting people out after the storm that would complicate, are already complicated parking situation right now, with the fences that are up. And frankly, it would just be easier if we removed the Titcomb Street Garage and left everything else the same. It came in as a communication, which I'm not a fan of, since we are funding this program, subject to appropriation anyway. I always felt that it has come in as an order, and should it be along the way, so we can make these amendments and changes along the way. So, if we have some leeway, I'd ask that we amend the communication to remove the Titcomb Street Garage, so we can move this forward. Thank you.
Sir, second. Thank you, Counsel Wright. Counsel Preston.
Yeah, thanks. So, I would appreciate hearing from the parking clerk, both how many cars in each snow emergency would end up in the Titcomb Street Garage, and what alternatives we would present for them.
I'm happy to address it. As a practical matter, we've had a policy that, for years, that during snow emergencies, anyone can go in that parking garage. It's, it's populated with many, many permits, many permits, mostly employee permits, but also residential permits. And if it is included, when there's a snow emergency, your employees will have no place to park, the people who have purchased their permits for the year have no place to park, and people sit there free, out of the snow, for three days, two days, however long. People can go in and park, residents can go in and park, they just need to pay. It sounds harsh, but it's self-adjusting. It works. It won't work if it was just opened up like the Green Street Lot. I guarantee you.
They'll pay anyways, yeah.
Can you just say the amendment again? I'm, I'm sorry. To strike the Titcomb Street Garage from...
That's all it... From, from alternate parking spots that's there. So, the alternate designated spots, as it says here, would be the Titcomb Street Parking Garage, which I'm asking to remove, the Green Street Municipal Lot, the Cushing Park, waterfront lots, east and west, when the fences come down, Hales Court, Prince Place, the Park and Ride at 90-story Ave, the State Street Lot, corner of Harrison Street, and all alternate spots. I believe there's one on, on Green Lake, off Pond Street, along the way, for some of those residents. So, we've made most accommodations along the way. The ask really here is to take the garage off, so that when people come into the city, they can actually park.
So, I guess my follow-up is, this is, I think, to the, pardon me, to the Ward Five Counsel's point is, I mean, you, you can't make an ordinance out of a communication. I mean, doesn't the ordinance already say where the snow parking is allowed? So, what is like, this is, this is an inherent conflict. I mean, I agree, it, it should be just homogenized. If we want to pass an ordinance to say the Titcomb Street is or isn't free snow parking, that's the way to do it, but with due respect, for example, to the DPS Director, you know, that you can't make a law out of, out of a policy, basically. So, I think Titcomb is excluded already as free snow parking, so this just homogenizes it. So, to me, it should just, you know, be stricken as it's not consistent with our law. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
And, and our past practice for years.
I yield.
Counsel Khan, did you have your hand up? No. Okay. Further discussion. Counsel Preston.
Sorry, point of clarity, I just want to make sure that I heard all of that correctly. So, Titcomb Street Garage is currently, per ordinance, not available for...
For free snow parking.
For free snow parking.
Free.
Gotcha. And so, this...
Says it is.
Doesn't particularly say it's free, but it is implied. I would agree with that. But it does not say that it's free. But, you know, so, if the ordinance already says that it's, it's not an available free spot, this, well, not, I, again, agree that it might be implied here, but it does not say it. At the very least, it's perhaps directional as somewhere you could put your car. Again, not free, and it doesn't say that it's free here, but it certainly would be, it would behoove us to at least be able to point residents in the direction of the parking garage. They might be very disappointed when they get there, and they find out they have to pay for it. But if we, we take it out, then we are sort of not even directing them as somewhere to go. I, I fully understand the point, I just...
I will say one thing. People know to go to the parking garage when it's snowing. That's not a question.
Yeah, they can afford it.
I know Ward Three goes there in a heartbeat. All of Ward Three. So, folks know.
So, just put in parentheses, paid, or, you know, paid parking.
Yeah, maybe that's a better, sorry, maybe that's a better suggestion, is, after Titcomb Street Parking Garage, parenthetically put, add a cost, or something to that nature.
Pay for use.
Was the parking that we removed free?
The snow?
It was free, so why wouldn't that be free? Because we're offsetting, that parking is now replaced in the garage, so...
It wasn't free. You mean down the...
Oh, you mean during the snow emergency?
Yeah.
So, Counsel McCauley.
So, to answer your question, so, the parking garage today, because the fences are up, is full of people who work in the city.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we have a snow emergency, and you can leave it there for three days, we would have people parking in the garage for three days, we would have people coming in to work with no place to park. And we've spent all this time pushing people from the waterfront lots into the garage, which the utilization has gone up, and now we're creating noise in, in that channel. So, if we can simply remove the garage as a free alternative, or perceived free alternative, for, who wouldn't want to park in the garage, right? It's covered, right? And all that stuff. But that creates other logistical problems for the workers in the city, right? An argument could be made, maybe people aren't coming into the city, but, you know, we, we have to plan as a city for everyone coming into, to the office, as we would, and having permits available as they would on a normal day going forward.
Counsel Z.
They'll pay it. They can afford it.
I don't even know what I want to say. I mean, I think there's a broader debate here, because actually, you are debating whether you want to make it available, you know, you want to direct people there or not, or you're saying, we actually really don't want to, because right now, we basically need that capacity for employees. So, I'll just be fine with removing it. I don't think a lot of people are referring to the snow plan as, as the, like, the bible of, of snow parking, but I, I do think this is probably part of that, like revisiting when the fences come down, how does this all work, and can you replace some free with other free, or where are people supposed to go? So, I'll support the amendment. I mean, it makes sense to me. We already had one difficult six-week period with the employees, and I really would prefer not to do that again, and it's always at somebody else's expense, but it is what it is, is just rationing that has to be done.
Counsel Wright.
Yeah, thank you, Man President. I'm not sure we can amend a communication, so...
That's fine.
My recommendation would be that it comes in as an order next year, then we can make changes to it, but it's a communication. We can't make changes to it.
Counsel Wallace.
Can we just make a recommendation, or have the clerk provide a recommendation to the administration, that we would like to see that removed from the document? I mean...
Sure.
Because especially if it gets posted, or, or whatever.
Yeah. They can change it, but we can't.
Yeah, I think, right.
Are you amenable to that, Clerk Jones?
Sure.
Just send an email.
I can just tell you, it would be pandemonium if, if it was just free parking. It would be...
So...
We've had so many issues with employees this year, that you just don't want to do it to us.
Pull in and pull out for you.
So, do you want to rescind your...
So, yeah, I, I will draw that, but I'll make a friendly amendment to the receiving file, that as part of the receiving file, we instruct the clerk's office to send a note to the administration to strike the Titcomb Street Garage from, from, as, as an option in the alternate spots.
Second.
All right. There's no other discussion. Roll call.
Roll call on receiving file with the instruction. Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
No.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Counsel Vogel? Counsel Vogel?
Just shake your head.
I don't, I don't hear you.
Counsel, Counsel Vogel, we're, we're doing a roll call on receiving and filing with an amendment, the Snow and Ice Plan.
Yeah, I did hear that part. I did hear you call my name. I vote yes.
Thank you. Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I have nothing else tonight, but we will be meeting regular time next Tuesday at five o'clock, and we are still talking about the Streets and Sidewalks Plan. It is not committee the whole, but I, I encourage any counselors to send any comments to myself and the committee, or encourage your residents to do so, with the idea of having something come out at our last meeting, December 11th. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good of the order. Counsel Wright.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'd just like to take a moment to thank the DPS employees who came out to resolve a issue with the sewer system on Sunday at our house. So, that's, that's the first thing I'd like to say. The second thing to the residents of Palm Island and other people who have the candy canes, if you notice that your candy cane is misbehaving, if it's staying on and it continues to suck, it actually sucked the water out of our toilets, because the flaps stayed open. The issue for DPS is if you don't report that to them, so they can fix it, they kind of have to go on a magical mystery tour throughout the whole island, to figure out which of those valve pits is creating the issue. So, they actually thanked me for making the call into them, so they knew exactly where they needed to go to fix the issue. So, if, if anyone's still listening at home, that's, that's the preferred way of dealing with those specific sewer-related issues.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Counsel, sorry, Clerk Jones.
If I might, I hope it's appropriate. With respect to the recounts, I'd like to publicly thank all the people involved. I don't know if you know this, but my fellow clerks from the surrounding areas came donating their time that day. I needed, you know, I have to say, because I want to say, the office was ready and frankly avoiding a stressful breakdown. Who else? Who else? All the candidates, and all of their many, many volunteers, everybody acted professional, and it was really a joy, even working with the attorney. We're not forgetting. Oh, and all my other volunteers, which are the people that came and counted or read, did fabulous job. So, at the risk of self-battitude, I just want to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
Roll call.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunne.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.